My name is Scott Lockwood and I'm the Executive Director of PAC-B TV, Balden'sville's public access television channel. A key component of PAC-B's mission is to provide unbiased coverage of the government and elections in Balden'sville, Lysander and Van Buren. On Tuesday, May 17th, 2022, the Balden'sville Central School District will hold elections to fill three seats on the school board. In the interest of democracy and an informed electorate, PAC-B invited all the candidates to interview on camera. Six candidates accepted our invitation. Candidates receive the same five questions several days before their scheduled interview, and they have no more than two minutes to answer each question. PAC-B has not edited the interviews other than to arrange them into two episodes of three candidates each. The order of appearance was determined by chance. We hope that you find these interviews useful for understanding the qualifications, positions and concerns of the individuals seeking seats on the school board. I'm speaking with Wayne Davison Jr., candidate for Balden'sville School Board. Thank you for joining us. Please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. I've been a resident of Balden'sville since 2008. My son and I moved here. As soon as he got here, he joined the Head Start program. So I got involved there, was one of the parent members. And just since then, trying to be involved in the community with his athletics, baseball, basketball, football, pretty much everything you can think of, he's been involved in. And I've been there with him along for the ride. And then also, he's a part of the music department at the school. He does chorus and theater and that kind of thing. So just trying to stay involved with him, but also trying to help be, you know, an active member of the community. Yeah, so that's pretty much my... I want to be a part of the board. I think I have a good diverse background from my experience. I work at rapid response monitoring. I've been there for 18 years. Was a shift trainer, a shift supervisor, and worked in data analysis as well. I went to SUNY Corland. I studied elementary education and I also studied communications there as well. So while I don't have an education degree, I have a little bit of an educational background. So I think that will help serve me on the school board because I think that gives me a good perspective of some of the things that our teachers tend to go through. So I think those things would help make me a good candidate to be a part of that team.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Sorry about that brief pause right there. All right. Your first question that we're asking this evening are, what are the three most pressing issues facing the school district? And how do you propose addressing them?
Sure. I mean, overall, I think the school district is fantastic. They do a lot of great things. I think me personally, there's a couple of things I would continue to work on, and that would be our mental health and emotional intelligence, helping prepare students for difficult situations they might become involved in, and just giving them ways to cope with those situations. So that would be one of the things I'd continue to work with. I know the school district does a great job with the positivity project and those kinds of things as well. Another thing I would want to do is try to get the students and community more involved in the education process. I think sometimes the school district or the school system can kind of fail kids when they need them the most going into those adolescent years, you know, that 12 to 16 to 18. Because most of the, you know, programs that they have for sports and that kind of thing, you age out at 12 years old. And then unless you're good enough to be on the team, you're not going to be able to do that. And I think those things are healthy habits for our students, and it helps keep them involved and keep them out of trouble and that kind of thing. So I think that would be something else. Also getting the kids more involved in this type of thing, like the school board election and just letting, you know, having them be more aware of, you know, things that could affect their life going forward. Our job as parents and as teachers is to prepare them for their life after school, you know, get them ready for the real world. So I think those two things are super important. I also think it's important to focus on reading. I know that some people have had a lot of questions about the reading scores. And it's just a matter of finding ways to bring it into your everyday life, whether it's putting subtitles on during a show, reading directions or ingredients for a recipe. Those types of things and, you know, project, whether it's in school or outside of school, I think make it more relatable for the kids. And that's what it's mostly about.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Question two. What steps can Balden'sville School District take in order to remain competitive with other districts in Anadaga County?
Sure. And like I said before, I think we already do a pretty great job. Going to and watching some of the board meetings recently, seeing what our science department does. They have a new 3D Smithsonian curriculum that they're following. That's pretty incredible. Our music departments, our athletics are all fantastic. So it's just a matter of keeping up with technology, I think. Trying to stay ahead of the curve, you know, and make sure that we're using those things in a positive way to help our students to grow and learn and to understand, and again, to prepare them for, you know, what they have ahead of them, the real world, so to speak, when they get out of school. I think that if we continue to do those things, that it would help to make Balden'sville, the school district, you know, competitive within, you know, Anadaga County. I do think they do a great job. So for the most part, if they just keep doing what they do, I think they'll be successful. But I think again, with my background and my experiences, just part of, you know, being part of the process and understanding how things work, being able to offer suggestions and tips would kind of help that process along. You know, like I said before, just making sure the students are involved because, you know, they are the future, as cheesy as it can be. You know, they are the ones that are on top of technology and, you know, whatever else is going on socially in the world. And we need to make sure that they know that they can have an effect on that and, you know, have them keep working to be a positive part of that.
Excellent. All right. Question three. What is a school board member's role and responsibility? How does that role differ from that of the superintendent or administration?
So the role of member of the Board of Education is kind of a liaison between the community and the administration. It's important, I think, for me as a parent to be able to have that voice, you know, to give my thoughts and ideas, I guess, to the administrators and what I think should be done and to help make this, you know, a well-rounded and diverse education for our students. They need to be able to understand how the budget works, you know, to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and fair with that, to vote on that, also to write policy and, you know, give feedback on that so that they can follow the rules and the curriculum and all that, you know, that we have to follow in order to stay up to date and get our grants and all of those types of things. So, you know, being able to listen to the community, listen to parents' concerns and try to understand them. You know, it doesn't matter if you necessarily agree or disagree with what they're saying. It's a matter of trying to understand their point of view and perspective. So I think, you know, being that liaison between the two and being able to offer, you know, my experiences as a parent and a volunteer and a service member of the community, I think those things are important to bring to that. Also, you know, just staying on top of things when it comes to what's going on socially and with technology, like I was saying before, it all kind of intertwines into helping, you know, make our community the best that it can be and making our students the best people they can be. Because that's what it kind of comes down to is just being a good person, you know, being helpful and trying to be the best that you can be.
Excellent. Thank you. Question four. What issues, if any, do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs?
Yeah, so like I was saying before, I think for the most part, the district does a great job. I think we need to support our teachers as they're the ones that know, you know, what's going on in the classroom. I think there needs to be a dialogue and communication, you know, between parents and, you know, the Board of Education and also the teachers and the administration. Everyone brings value. Everyone has an important role, you know, whether it's a janitor or a bus driver or the principal. You know, everyone plays a role in the education of our students. And I think it's important to keep a positive and optimistic outlook and, you know, be friendly and, you know, just greet the kids and make them feel warm and welcome. We want to make sure that, you know, the school and the learning system is a warm and welcoming environment for everybody. You know, everyone should be accepted. They should be allowed to be themselves, you know, and feel safe in that environment. And we also want to find out ways to, you know, find out what motivates them. You know, we have to find out what they like, you know, how they learn. And those things are things that we need to focus on to make sure that they want to become lifelong learners because that's what life is about. You know, the experiences and the events that you go to, the things that you do and, I guess, you know, making your own legacy, so to speak, and, you know, creating those opportunities to learn and mostly to understand people and to, you know, get to know them. I think a lot of times people are afraid of change and people are afraid of things that are different. So they immediately, you know, kind of shun or turn their head. And it's important to learn about those, you know, because that's how we understand. Again, we don't necessarily have to agree or disagree with everything. It's just a matter of understand where they're coming from and accepting, you know, everyone's point of view.
All right. And finally, question five. The school system budget is central to the success of the district. What are your budget priorities and where would you make changes?
Very, very important. Money is always important. I know the school district does a great job keeping track of where that's going, you know, and the grants and everything that they get to provide, the things that they provide for our students. Again, I just think it's about being fair and balanced. I also think that they should put a little bit more money into some programs. I know they have a lot of programs, but, you know, like I was saying before, to get kids involved, you know, at a younger age, whether it's having a comic book club, you know, to help with reading, you know, to go along with what I was saying before, just trying to meet them on their level to get them more involved. The capital project looks great, you know, to keep in touch with technology and, you know, making sure that our schools are up to standards to make sure that our kids are prepared for the, you know, computer technology and everything that's going on because that's where everything's going. You know, it's going to keep moving forward. So it's important to keep moving with it. Otherwise, you're going to fall behind. So just using that, I also think it's important to have a little bit of a surplus just in case things happen, you know, with the way that inflation has been and, you know, gas prices, to be able to have that money so that we can use that for things that we need and not have to take away from other things that we need. But, yeah, I mean, athletics, extracurricular activities in general, the music department, they're all super important parts of, you know, the monies that come into the school. But, you know, supporting the teachers, giving them the supplies they need, whether it's, you know, books, rulers, laptops, that kind of thing, which I do think we do a good job of staying up to date. But supporting them is going to help them to give our students the best education they can get. So I think that's, yeah, absolutely very important.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And once again, I'm meeting with candidate for Balden'sville School Board, Mr. Wayne Davison Jr. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
I'm speaking with Luke Gazowski, candidate for Balden'sville School Board. Thank you for joining me, Luke. Please tell me a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, I just said, my name's Luke Gazowski. I'm excited to run for school board. I started for a junior school board years ago when my daughter was there. And when we moved to Balden'sville, we came to Balden'sville because of the school district. That was our main draw. My daughter had a lot of special needs and talking through community members, other parents with children of special needs and just actually general population, Balden'sville was probably one of the highest rated or definitely the highest recommended school in central New York. So because of the support and those programs, we chose Balden'sville. And since we've been profoundly happy with what we have, and I really want to help continue that excellence as well as enhance what we can within the academic and all of the exceptional programs that we offer, not only to our students but to the community.
Excellent. All right. Thank you so much. Well, let's jump right in. Question number one. What are the three most precious... Excuse me. What are the three most pressing issues facing the school district? And how do you propose addressing them? I'm sorry. Just a second. Technology, there you go.
There are quite a few issues pressed in the school district. The top three may depend on perception, but I think one of them is recovering post-pandemic. You know, the students went a very significant time with remote learning. They didn't have preschool. A lot of the preschools shut down completely. They didn't have the resources or the technology to continue, nor really the most appropriate way in that preschool age setting for learning. So now you have students that have come into the district either without that or with only parts and pieces of what would have been normal. So I think focusing on our academics and programming, really supporting the teachers, the staff, the programs we have to get our academics and achievements back up to where they should be and even excel them a little bit, I think is a huge focus. One other large pressing issue, I think, is taxes, right? So Van Buren and Lysander are increasing everybody's assessments, 12% blanket, which is going to put a potential tax burden on everybody. And I think for the school district, not only to operate and continue, you know, we really need to be not only respectful and see what we can do to have very little to no tax burden increase. I think that's a lot of stress on the community as a whole while trying to balance that budget to continue to support the excellence in the academics that we have. From what I understand, there's also a huge controversy within books. And I don't think a book is ever banned in the district. And I believe books belong in a library, but I also believe that age-appropriate materials are what need to be accessible to students. I believe our administration, our teachers do and will continue to focus on making sure age-appropriate items are what are available to our students.
Okay. Excellent. And question two. What steps can the Balden'sville School District take in order to remain competitive with other districts in Anadaga County?
I think one of the big things Balden'sville can do is continue in the positives when it comes to academics, but also enhance and improve what we're already doing. Again, we're recovering out of a pandemic, but looking at our report card as a whole, there's areas of improvement within not only the support that we could do for our students, but molding them to success. For example, I believe it's only about... A region's passing rate's only about 89% with the two lowest subjects being math and science. All the other subjects are doing much well when it comes to passing rate. So I think we can focus more on enhancing those areas, targeting some of the low-hanging fruit on what we can to support our teachers, support our students, and really enhance our academics as a whole to be more competitive with all the schools within the county. One other thing I think we can do is focus on the target areas. We have a few schools on the New York State Target List that are not in good standing academically or within all the reporting metrics. And I think as we are expanding our reporting metrics and our data collection as a district, we should be able to drill down on what we can do to improve upon and really give focus on enhancing that when comparative or when comparing to other districts and really continue the positive momentum that we have. I also think one of the things that we already offer is we offer a lot of programming and really are on the higher end when it comes to certain special programming, such as special needs, some of the other extracurriculars. And I think continuing that focus and continuing to push them forward will keep us set apart and higher when compared to schools in the county.
Excellent. Thank you. Question number three. What is a school board member's role and responsibility? How does that role differ from that of the superintendent or administration?
So a school board member has a fiduciary duty, not only to the students but to the taxpayers. You know, we have the fiscal responsibility of managing and carrying the budget. We have the responsibility of setting policies as well as really championing our academics, our achievements, inclusion within the district and our schools. We also have the responsibility of hiring and oversight of the administration, specifically the superintendent. And when it comes to the day-to-day operations, that is where the superintendent administration is there. We hired them to maintain our day-to-days, to carry out those policies that are set forth by the board as well as to continue that excellence within the goals and focus that has come for our students and schools, right? So the superintendent administration, they hire our teachers. They really focus on what we can do every day to continue the mission and carry out those goals set forth by the board. And the board really pushes and champions that administration, not only to support our teachers, our students and staff, but also to make sure we're hiring the best, that we're hiring those that can not only carry out the mission and goals but excel within our academics and achievement within the district.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, question four. What issues, if any, do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs?
And I mentioned before, I think academics can use a little bit more focus. We do have a couple of schools on the target list. And like I said, if you look at the report card, our lower regions passing subjects are math and science. So I think we can really focus on enhancing that piece, bring some more academics back in. As far as support, making sure we're hiring the best teachers we can, making sure that we're supporting our students with all of their needs in order to be successful in the classroom. One thing I think we're doing well that we really need to focus on continuing is that UPK program. Throughout the pandemic, we... A lot of the preschool programs were closed, part-time or not available. And this February, the district started their UPK, and I think that's absolutely fantastic. And I think looking at continuing that program, expanding and growing that program is only going to further enhance academics long-term. You're going to take those younger children as they enter kindergarten, prepare them for school and really set them up to success with a solid foundation for not only what they're learning, but how to learn and what they can do to shape their ability to progress through school, through their education, through their career in academia to come out profoundly successful.
And finally, question five. The school system budget is central to the success of the district. What are your budget priorities and where would you make changes?
So for the school budget, that is a bit pretty big deal. That's one of our fiduciary duties, one of our responsibilities, fiscally to the district but to the taxpayer. And again, as I mentioned before, you know, with the towns increasing everybody's assessments, that inherently could create more tax burden to everybody. So I think we need to not only focus on what we can do to continue the enhancement, continue the improvement within the district, continue to support our current programs as well as look forward at what we can do to expand, whether it be with infrastructure, whether it be with academics, whether it be with staff, students, and really expanding our programming, but doing so in a manner that raises taxes little to none, especially when the current environment of our society in the market with inflation, costs of living is rising significantly. Our, again, our assessed values of our homes are proposed to go up, which that alone may increase the tax burden. So what can we do to not only create a balanced budget, continue to enhance our programs, but also maintain with little to potentially no increase that we can? And I think that's a big stressor to the community is how can we continue to be the best, to grow, to improve our schools, bring our schools off of the target list into good standing while maintaining a, hopefully, little to zero cost increase to the community?
Excellent. Thank you so much, Luke. I've been speaking with Luke Gazowski, candidate for Balden'sville School Board. Thank you very much. I'm joined now by Claudine Holtman. Claudine is a candidate for Balden'sville School Board. I'd like to thank you for speaking with me. And please tell me a little bit about yourself.
Okay. First, I'd like to say thank you so much for putting this together. I think it is a wonderful idea to get all the candidates together so the community can hear about us. So I basically grew up in Balden'sville, have spent most of my life here. And I work for OC and Boise Special Education right now as well as a private early intervention agency as well.
Very nice. Thank you. Well, let's jump right in. Question one. All right. Sorry about that. Question one. What are the three most pressing issues facing the school district? And how do you propose addressing them?
So I think the most pressing situation in our district right now, as well as any other district across America, is the learning losses that took place due to the pandemic. And I think that as far as addressing that situation, I think just really honing in on the traditional academics, giving students as much time and extra support as possible to meet the standards that are set for them would be the most important way to address the situation.
All right. Thank you. And question two. What steps can the Balden'sville School District take in order to remain competitive with other districts in Anadaga County?
So if you look at the current report card that's on the district website, you can see by grade level where we compare to other districts in the county. So we actually, if I'm reading, if I'm reading the report card correctly, we are actually higher achieving than most of the districts within our region, which is great. However, if you look at some of the numbers of students who are seriously in need of intervention or close to that level of severity, those numbers are somewhat high. And I think that that would be a very important thing to tackle for our district.
All right. All right. Question three. What is a school board member's role and responsibility? How does that role differ from that of the superintendent or administration?
So I actually had to do a little homework on that because the jobs sort of overlap a little bit. And I don't claim to know everything there is to know about the positions, but with the Board of Education basically oversees policy and goals for the district. They do the hiring of the superintendent. And then the superintendent and the higher administration is more geared to carrying the policies through and, you know, activating what needs to go into success in the goal areas. So I think those are the differences there.
All right. And question four. What issues, if any, do you believe the district needs to address in its academic programs?
So one thing I think is very important is to realize, and I'm not necessarily saying that our district doesn't do a great job with us. I just think that we could be doing a better job. I think that is addressing the dynamic and unique needs of some of our students. Some of our students, again, going back to their report card, that doesn't look great for K through nine students if you look at the big picture and if I'm reading the report card correctly. I think that some of those students are unique learners and who don't learn the typical traditional way. And I think they're offering them different pathways and looking, you know, for the kids who are the AP students, great. Maybe we could offer more for them. For the kids who are the career technical education type kids, let's do more for them. And for the vocational kids, same things. Just sort of meeting kids where they are and understanding where their strengths and needs are and really preparing them long-term for the life that they're going to lead after graduation.
All right. And finally, question five. The school system budget is central to the success of the district. What are your budget priorities and where would you make changes?
So I wouldn't, again, I don't want to claim to know a lot about our budget and, you know, where the monies are allocated or even where the monies come from necessarily. I do think it's important that we focus on student achievement. And student achievement can look different based on the student makeup. So again, going back to the different pathways, a variety of instructional goals for our kids, I think is hugely important to get them ready for a very competitive world as well as the other thing. I don't walk into our buildings and say, wow, this is really in need of some repair. really in need of some repair. But I think that some of our buildings need some, you know, some renovation, remodeling. I know that the district is putting forth a budget for next one or next Tuesday, I think we vote on that. And looking at that, looking at the outline there, I think that seems very appropriate and needed.
All right, well, thank you so much, Claudine. Again, I'm with Claudine Holtman, and she's a candidate for the Baldwinsville School Board. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for watching our school board candidate interviews. We hope that you found these interviews useful for understanding the qualifications, positions and concerns of the individuals seeking seats on the Baldwinsville School Board. The school board election will occur on Tuesday, May 17, 2022. Please be sure to participate in this important election. All the interviews may be streamed on PACB's YouTube, Facebook and Vimeo channels at any time.